Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, September 4th, the year is 2001. It is now about 10:20 a.m. City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. We're as close to it as we can. Members, welcome back from the recess. Hope you all enjoyed yourself and come back with the batteries recharged. Mr. Clerk, first order of business. Call the roll, please.
Ferguson, Glanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Wax, Weiss, Stein, and Padilla, ten members present in a corner. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Holden moves and Ms. Hahn seconds.
Salute to the flag.
Mr. Pacheco, will you please do the honors?
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Members of the public, the first council meeting of the month, which is sometimes on a Friday, but today happens to be on a Tuesday, is also when we invite members of the religious community to come and provide us with an invocation. I'd like to introduce to all of you the Reverend Albert Cohen.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father of nations, guardian of cities, we come to you this morning in thanksgiving for the gift of another season of service in behalf of the citizens of Los Angeles. We are grateful for this renewed building, for the encouraging spaces here for the council, their staffs, and departments to work safely, efficiently, and effectively. We give thanks for the many and varied talents of these who make city government function. We are especially mindful this morning of the memorial service in Glendale going on right now for Sheriff's Deputy Officer Jake Kuregian, who risked and lost his life that we might walk the city streets safely. We pray that this council chamber be a place where the cries and petitions of the little ones are heard sympathetically and where the demands of the great ones are tempered, so that an even-handed justice prevails in these chambers. We pray that those who make decisions and administer policies may have the courage to do what is right. Help them be wise and generous stewards of the rich resources of this bountiful land. And may your spirit rest upon each of these who have been vested with so much responsibility that at the end of the day all may be found worthy of the trust which makes public service possible. These things we pray in God's name, the one who is our ultimate judge and savior. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, next order of business.
Mr. President, before starting the regular agenda, there's a few items to be continued. Item number one, a request from Council District One that that matter be continued until October 5th.
Colleagues, request to continue item number one without objection.
Item number 19, a request from Council District One that this matter be continued until September 19th.
Request to continue item number 19, also without objection.
Item number 24, request from Council District One to continue that matter until September 19th.
Request to continue item 24 without objection.
And item number 26, a request that that matter be continued by Council District One until September 19th.
Item 26, request to continue, also without objection.
Item number 43, a request from the city attorney to continue that matter until September 19th.
Colleagues, request to continue item 43 without objection.
I bring you to the regular agenda, Mr. President. Items numbers two through six are items noticed for public hearing.
Items number two through six have been noticed for public hearing. Request to speak cards have been filed for items four and six, leaving items two, three, and five. For items two, three, and five, we shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak on items two, three, or five? Item three is called special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none, clerk, please, open the roll on items two and five. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved.
Item number two contains an ordinance and will be held over for a second reading on September 19th.
Next items, please.
Items numbers seven through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Item number seven is called special by Ms. Hahn. Public hearing has been heard on these items, so we will not request a public comment period for these items. Any other specials? Items seven through 13. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items eight through 13. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Items numbers 14 through 42 are items which public hearings have not been held. The council has already acted on items number 18, 24, and 26.
I have no request for members of the public to speak on any of these items. Members, any specials? Items 14 on. Item 15, Mr. Garcetti calls 15 special. Ms. Miskowski calls 23 special. Any other specials?
I'd like to continue. I have 22 for three weeks.
Colleagues, request to continue item number 22 until September 25th without objection. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those items are approved.
Item number 14, 16, and 17 are ordinances that will be held over for a second reading on September 19th. Item number 44 is on the supplemental agenda. It's an item for which public hearing has not been held.
And I do not have a request for members of the public to speak on item 44. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak on item 44? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. Let's send that item forthwith.
I bring you back to item number three, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Item number three is now before us. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Hold it on the table, Mr. President.
Okay. We'll hold that item on the table. Next item, please.
Item number six, called special inasmuch as the public wishes to speak on this item.
Colleagues, this is the item that we've all been waiting for today. We'll begin with a public comment period. Public comment was held in committee this morning. Is that correct, Mr. Reyes? Would you like to move for a public comment period here at the full council?
Mr. President, this item is a notice for public hearing inasmuch as it contains an item from Planning Department, I believe, that requires a public hearing.
Okay, so let's just go straight to the cards. We have quite a number of cards here, so I'll ask members of the public, speaking on this item, for a little bit of brevity, the council calls forward Mr. Gene Hall, or Hale can read the writing, to be followed by Stan Maloda.
Good morning. I'm Gene Hale, Chairman of the Greater Los Angeles African American Chamber of Commerce. As I said in the earlier meeting, at the Plumb Meeting, that the chamber fully supports this project primarily for the reasons that the L.A. Arena Company has been a great corporate citizen to this community. We've been able to see results. Some of our members, subcontractors, and laborers have actually transitioned from the training program at the Central Freeway and worked on the Staples Center, so we think there's more ahead for many others, and so we fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stan Maloda, to be followed by Richard Slosson.
Morning, Mr. President, honorable members of council. Stan Michota of Forest City Residential West, a property investor for several years in the South Park area. Many of you know that after developing Angeles Plaza and the Bunker Hill District, the senior citizens' facility, Forest City moved its attention to South Park in the development of the Skyline condominiums, a project that was 90% restricted to first-time homebuyers. Followed that in the late '80s with the Metropolitan Apartments. I'm another mixed-income community, and we're now in the process of completing the development of a block immediately northeast of the Staples Arena. We have had very little return on any of our investments in South Park. We are absolutely delighted to see the investment that the Arena Company is making. After 40 years of major mixed-use development experience, I can tell you that it's important to create an environment that invites investment. We think that's what this plan does, and we urge your support. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Richard Slosson. I'm the Executive Secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. Our council represents 130,000 craft workers throughout the Los Angeles and Orange County area, working in the Los Angeles community and living in the Los Angeles community as well. I'm here today to ask your support for the proposal for item number six on the agenda. I wanted to inform you of our past relationship with Staples, which has been fantastic. As you know, Staples Arena has been a tremendous addition to the city of Los Angeles, and our members participated in the construction of that project. It was after a long period of negotiation with the Staples Arena folks, the arena builders, that we arrived in an agreement that allowed 100% usage of negotiated wages and benefits on that project. We support this project as well. We think it's a great addition for the city and the downtown area. Will keep people in the city after dark. A hotel adjacent to the convention center that is proposed for the future will be also a great financial boost to the convention center and the city itself. As you know, in past years, the city has supplemented the operation of the convention center, and mainly because it was not able to attract enough business to pay for itself. We think a hotel in the entertainment center will lead to the full financial operation and successful financial operation of the convention center as well as the entertainment district, and therefore we ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have just received a request to speak on this item by our controller of the city of Los Angeles, Ms. Laura Chik. She join us? Not yet. Let me know when she gets here. We'll take her up. Next, Orlando Ward, to be followed by Mr. Charlie Wu.
Good morning. My name is Orlando Ward. I'm from the Midnight Mission, and on behalf of the Board Directors of the Midnight Mission, I stand in support of this project. We have witnessed and experienced an enormous amount of support from the Staples Center, and in serving over 2,000 people a day in the Skid Row area, homeless, near-homeless people, we anticipate fully that this project will continue in that spirit of support for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Charlie Wu, to be followed by Ms. Carol Schatz.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Wu. I'm the Chairman of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. It gives me a great pleasure to represent the chamber this morning to support this project. I'm sure you all are aware of the benefits, the impact it has on the downtown community, the jobs it will create during construction and all the businesses afterwards, the tax revenue it will bring because of the visitors to Los Angeles. But I'd like to talk briefly about the broader impact. It would really enhance our city as the capital of the new millennium. It would bring the best and the brightest of all profession to our convention center to really interact with the emerging industries and the local talents in this city, to expose what we have in Los Angeles to the world. And I think it would create tremendous opportunity for everybody in this area, and that's why we enthusiastically support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Carol Schatz, President of the Central City Association and the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. Together, we represent over 500 property owners and businesses, not only in downtown Los Angeles, but throughout Los Angeles. We urge your support of the second phase of Staples Entertainment Project. In 1997, we strongly supported the creation of the arena, and it has brought the promises that it made, has brought to downtown Los Angeles already. The promise was to turn the lights on in downtown Los Angeles. That's a promise we're still trying to fulfill, but with the restaurant activity, with the renewed interest of investors, the housing boom that we're seeing, Staples was really the catalyst to make this all happen. We all know that it is critical that these blocks between Staples Center and downtown, per se, be filled in with vibrant activity, and this is what the promise is of this second phase of the entertainment district. We have worked out a series of design principles with the arena owners that will move more activity out onto the streets and onto Figaroa and move it into the downtown core. We want that streetscape continued to Seventh Street so people feel comfortable walking from the hotels down to Staples, but this project has the promise to really turn on in every light in downtown, and we hope that you will support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have now been joined by the Controller, Ms. Laura Chik, to be followed by Michael
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, council members. It is actually an exciting pleasure to be here for the first time to address you as your new city controller, but I'm here very much in support of the project before you. I was very involved in the first phase of the arena project, and my support very much was based on the fact that I saw this second phase as being key for two very important reasons in particular, and there are more than two. One, because it was key in moving to create that vibrant pedestrian life and to spread the economic development out further beyond into the neighborhoods surrounding the arena. And secondly, because I saw it as the way to finally deliver that anchor hotel that could make Los Angeles a successful and effective convention destination city. So I'm here to join in saying a job well done in those that have put this together in working closely with all segments of the community to build a consensus. I'm especially here to offer my active support and participation and teamwork as your city controller to make sure that this goes forward in the most fiscally responsible and accountable way. And to that end, my office will be releasing in the next week or so, three audits that we've done on the convention center that I believe will present for discussion and hopefully your interest and support. Some lessons learned, lessons learned that can be applied to making this project deliver a successful convention center and for this project to be successful as well as fiscally responsible and accountable. And finally, I'm here very much in support of our new mayor, Jim Hahn's, position that there are ways to make all of what I just said happen and to do it from the private sector and not to use public dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chik. Mr. Michael Collins, to be followed by Madeline Janis Aparicio.
I too, Mr. President, will be very, very brief. I want to echo the comments that you've already heard, but speak with a very parochial point of view with regards to this project inasmuch as we're focusing on the convention center and its ability to be competitive. If you take a look at the competition that we're dealing with in Las Vegas and San Diego and Anaheim and San Francisco, they have a rather compelling context, environment immediately around their convention center. Ours does not. The project before you enables that context to be built, and within that, the prospect of a successful hotel. If one built a hotel there today without this project, that hotel would not survive. It needs the environment that is a part of this particular project in order for it to succeed. So I'm grateful to be in front of you this morning and encourage your positive approval of this motion.
Thank you. Madeline Janis Aparicio, to be followed by Scott Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Madeline Janis Aparicio with the L.A. Alliance for a New Economy and a member of the Figure a Quarter Coalition for Economic Justice, and I was, I had the pleasure of being involved in negotiating this community benefits plan. I wanted to just talk for a moment about the incredible and unprecedented jobs program that's in this community benefits plan, which is, upon approval today, will be legally enforceable by the city. Basically, what we did, because we took the three policies that the city council has already adopted, which are living wage, living wage ordinance, the worker retention ordinance, and the responsible contractor ordinance. None of these apply to tenants in redevelopment projects, so none of these would apply to the vast majority of the jobs that are going to be in this development. So we put that all on the bargaining table, and we added the job access and the job training components, which are so key, and came up with a package which we believe will ensure that of the 5,400 permanent jobs, about 70% will be living wage, about half will be unionized at least, plus there's going to be job security, and there's going to be an assurance that they're not law-breaking companies in here, as well as a really innovative and exciting program with support from the developer to provide training to the neighborhood residents and access to the jobs. So we think that this, plus all the other components, make this a very exciting and unique project. We hope to see this as a model for all the other We hope to see this as a model for all the other economic development projects that have public involvement that are going to be coming before you. In fact, we hope to see the council and the city take this up as a potential permanent kind of policy template for making it a requirement for future projects. So we strongly support this development and are excited to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Schmidt, to be followed by Thomas McAlire.
Good morning. I'm Scott Schmidt. I'm, excuse me, Scott Schmidt, on behalf of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. I'm here this morning in strong support of the Los Angeles Sports Entertainment District. Out in the valley, we believe that having a strong downtown that's vibrant is important to the future of the City of Los Angeles, so we encourage your support. Thank you.
Thomas McAlire, to be followed by Maria Elena Durazo.
Mr. President, City Council, Tom McAlire. I'm the financial secretary treasurer of the IITSC Local 33, the state chancellor in Los Angeles, also the chief political officer. I was a supporter of the original Staples project, and what has it meant to our members? It's a five-year contract, the first year of which is completed, which has derived $6 million, that's $6 million, in state chancellor wages and benefits, which means no one's going to free clinics, people are making a living, and the self-esteem level is tremendous thanks to this project. I have every reason to believe, with all the efforts made by Staples and the Figueroa Street Coalition, that this is a broader-based and strong project for the City of Los Angeles, and I hope it does set the standard for future projects. Yes, I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Durazo, to be followed by Mina Kedar.
Good morning, members of the city council. It's great to be back in these chambers on this project. Usually, on behalf of hotel and restaurant workers, food service workers, who generally get excluded from the kinds of projects that we're talking about today, we're very proud that this project, in fact, has included workers from our industry from the very beginning, included us, negotiated with us, to make sure that not only, and very important, equally important, not only are the construction jobs unioned, to make sure that those are good jobs, stable jobs for Los Angeles, but that the permanent jobs, after the hotel is built, after this project is built, all of those service jobs are also good jobs for the City of Los Angeles. We have got to stop the creation of minimum wage, dead-end, no-benefit jobs in the City of L.A. if we're ever going to come out of that gap between the rich and poor. So we are here to support 100% this project, and we urge and hope that every member of the city council will do the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kedar, to be followed by Irene Lewis.
Good morning, city council. I'm Mina Kedar from the Downtown Women's Center. We operate a drop-in day center and residence, long-term residence, for mentally ill and elderly women, and I'm here to support the project. We feel it will create opportunities for our program participants and for downtown residents. We support it, and we hope you support it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Irene Lewis, to be followed by John Stoddard.
Irene Lewis, executive director of the Red Shield Youth and Community Center in Pico Union, just four blocks of the Staples Center. I'm here in support of the project and as the council to go forward. As a community agency, the arena project has been very supportive of the community and have worked together to address the issues of concern, and I look forward to that partnership and that continued relationship.
Mr. Stoddard, to be followed by John Good.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name is John Stoddard. I'm the general manager of the Wilshire Grand Hotel. In order for the hospitality industry and the tourism industry to continue to grow and flourish in downtown, I ask your support of item number six, Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment District. Thank you.
Mr. Good, to be followed by Mike Pfeffer.
Mr. President, council members, my name is John Good. I represent the Board of Directors and staff of Inner City Arts. Our facility is approximately two miles away from the Staples project. We're here in support of this project. We found Staples management to be extremely good corporate citizens, very responsible and caring to the families that live in the downtown area, and we think this project is yet another way to improve the downtown area. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Pfeffer, to be followed by Bert Saavedra.
Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the council. I'm Mike Pfeffer. I'm the executive director of the South Park Stakeholders Group. On behalf of our board of directors, I wish to express our strong support for the Los Angeles Sports Entertainment District proposal. The South Park Stakeholders Group is a nonprofit association of public and private sector property owners and local business leaders who are working with the city to promote the continuing economic, social, and cultural growth and vitality of South Park and the immediate area west of the Harbor Freeway. This project, as proposed, is very exciting and consistent with the concepts and ideas proposed by the stakeholders group and the Community Redevelopment Agency in the South Park Development Strategies and Design Guidelines Report that was published by the CRA in 1995 that envisioned South Park as a premier live-work community in downtown Los Angeles. We look forward to the completion of this project as proposed, and are especially supportive of the new addition of hotel facilities adjacent to the convention center. These additional hotel rooms have been needed for a very long time in order to enable the convention center to realize its full potential in the highly competitive convention and trade show marketplace. We are also very excited about the prospect of thousands of new jobs with the district's construction and the additional thousands of jobs related to new hotel, entertainment, retail, and other operations when the district is completed. In summary, the stakeholders group sees the Los Angeles Sports Entertainment District as a very welcome addition to downtown. We encourage the council to support this proposal and further cement Los Angeles as the sports and entertainment capital of the Pacific Rim. Thank you.
Thank you. Bert Saavedra, to be followed by Lawrence Teeter.
Good morning. My name is Bert Saavedra, and I'm a representative of the Coalition for Safe Practices in partnership with the United Coalition East. Jointly, we represent residents living in the communities of Pico Union, South Park, and Skid Row. The Coalition's mission statement is to enhance and maintain the quality of life for persons residing or working within a one-mile radius surrounding the Staples Entertainment Center. We are poised to address and reduce issues related to alcohol consumption abuse through preventive efforts. Since April 2001, we have been in dialogue with the representatives of the Los Angeles Land Company regarding the proposed Staples Center. We have attended all public hearings pertaining to the development agreement and the specific plan process. We have submitted 1,200 signatures and letters in support of our efforts. The Coalition funded and submitted proposed conditions for 24 alcohol consumption establishments for the Staples Entertainment Center. The Coalition and developer have mutually agreed on the proposed condition based on each type of establishment. The conditions are presented in the best interest of the community's well-being and public safety. We would like to thank the developer for accepting the conditions and our configuration for the community advisory group. Both measures will assist the developer and future tenants with the appropriate reference to maintain quality of life standards. As stated in the development agreement, the developers shall seek ongoing input of the community advisory group with respect to issuance of plan approval for alcohol uses. The developers shall provide the city with the results of its discussions with the community advisory group in seeking any approval plans. We continue to be available for technical assistance and look forward to working with the developer in the coming years, and we are in support of this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lawrence Teeter, to be followed by Gilda Haas.
Good morning, Lawrence Teeter. I represent the Coalition for Community Rights and Terry Doucely. I would like to point out that the primary rationale for this project, as set forth in the Statement of Overriding Considerations that you're being asked to adopt, is you'll get a hotel for the purpose of allowing the convention center to compete with other convention centers in other cities. Well, the fact of the matter is, you're not getting a hotel at all. This project and the development agreement gives rise to a 20-year option to build a hotel, so it's a matter of speculation as to whether that hotel will ever be built, which means the Statement of Overriding Considerations is unsupported by substantial evidence and should not be adopted today. Second, the EIR is defective. This is not the second, this is not an independent project. When the Staples Center was adopted, it was adopted on the premise with a promise that this project would be built to provide for assistance to the convention center. So this is really one project all in one. There should have been one EIR which evaluated the Staples Center, this project, and the expansion of the convention center as part of a single project. That's not what happened. The city's engaged, along with the developer, in a classic maneuver of segmenting development, that is chopping it into bite-sized pieces so that different phases have a better chance of approval, because the impacts appear smaller when it's cut in three portions than they would be if it's all analyzed at once. The EIR does not disclose the fact that we learned from the plan, the amended plan before you, which is that the city has a plan to increase the floor space of the convention center by 250,000 square feet. That information should have been provided in the EIR. The project was ill-defined in the EIR. It failed to take into account the reasonably foreseeable impacts of the project even as they defined it. I don't believe you should certify this EIR. What you should do is require that it be revised and recirculated to take into account significant new information in the form of what's disclosed in the plan for the first time, namely, the fact that the convention center is to be expanded by 250,000 square feet. That should have been in there. That colors all analyses, not simply traffic, but development-inducing effects and everything else. You simply can't leave that out for some future EIR. The only discussion you have in your EIR of the plan to expand the convention center is based upon a five- or six-line quotation from a 1986 EIR. That document is antediluvian. It's absolutely out of date, and it sheds no light on what's actually going on today. So I don't believe that your document is consistent with what's required by CEQA, and I would also urge you to require recirculation and revision of the EIR for an additional reason. As you know, the general plan framework of the city with findings has been rescinded and was recently readopted with a Statement of Overriding Considerations premised on an acknowledgement by the city that its transportation and mitigation management program, TIP, is infeasible because of lack of assured funding from other levels of government.
I could ask you to conclude, please.
Yes, I believe that this EIR should be revised to reflect the infeasibility of the city's traffic management plan, so that a more realistic appraisal of the traffic impacts of this project can be prepared. So once again, please do not certify the EIR. I think you should revise it or recirculate it, and you should not adopt a Statement of Overriding Considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilda Haas, to be followed by Anna Valenzuela.
Good morning, Gilda Haas, Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. We're really here today to celebrate the community benefits program that's been adopted by this developer, and we see there's three really, I've been doing this for about 25 years, so in my view, there's other people who might have more experience, but three really unprecedented achievements related to development in L.A. The first is the level of community benefits, community participation and collaboration. We had environmental groups, housing groups, labor unions, churches, neighborhood folks collaborating with each other and with the developer. The level of benefits included in the package, affordable housing, living wage jobs, local hiring, parks, and other kinds of services. And finally, the level of accountability that's structured into this program, where the city will have it included in the development agreement, so that there will be an accountability structure every year, and in addition to that, an oversight committee of the community. So we urge you to support this project, to support our efforts, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms... Anna Valenzuela, to be followed by Marta Gudino.
Buenos dias. Soy Anna Valenzuela.
Morning. My name is Anna Valenzuela.
Vivo medio bloque de Staples.
I live half a block away from Staples Center.
Vengo representando a mi comunidad, pertenezco a Coalición Figueroa.
I'm here representing my community. I am a member of the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice.
Vengo apoyando el paquete sobre viviendas económicas.
I'm here in support to the housing package.
Nosotros, los que vivimos cerca del Staples Center.
The residents that live close by the Staples Center.
Necesitamos viviendas de bajo recurso.
We need affordable housing.
Pagamos mucho por las viviendas en este momento donde vivimos, y no, son viviendas muy sucias, llenas de ratones, y muy caras.
The units that we live in at the present time are expensive and are in really bad conditions.
Yo, personalmente, yo apoyo esto para, para mí y para mi familia. Pienso que si se va a dar este proyecto de viviendas de bajo recursos...
I personally support this project for my family and myself.
Mis hijos vivirán mejor sobre la, los, sobre las personas que tengan que mirar, que estemos bien, y que estos apartamentos sean limpios y estén bajo, bajo la ciudad, y que estén en reglas para que nosotros vivamos como seres humanos. Gracias.
I believe that by having this project going through and having affordable units getting built as part of the project, my family and our residents, our neighbors are going to live in much better conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Marta Gudino, to be followed by Sister Diane Donahue.
Marta Gudino is not here.
Okay. Then Sister Diane Donahue, to be followed by Victor Narro.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm Sister Diane Donahue with Esperanza Community Housing and the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. We have an unprecedented agreement with the developer Staples. This has never happened before. It's been noted in The Washington Post, The New York Times, The Wall Street Journal, as well as our own local papers. Nobody's ever done this before, and so we know that we're on to something that is of incredible concern, value, and vision, and that's why I'm supporting it. I was on the negotiating team representing affordable housing. We have a 20% set aside. By law, we would have had 15%. Staples has said the max that they will probably build in terms of affordable housing is 800 units. That's 160 units that will be affordable. They've also set up a fund for pre-development to build outside the circle of approximately a mile, so that we have affordable housing developing right away and in larger units. That, again, is unprecedented. So I really, I ask your support. I think this is a good program. We went head-to-head and knuckle-to-knuckle to get this. It was not easy, but it was worth it, and we did it, and we did it in a concerted and collaborative way, and that ought to be the way the city does business, and that any kind of community benefit program is always included, especially when you're doing business with the city, and if there's any kind of city money subsidy involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Narro, to be followed by Juanita Tate.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, council members. My name is Victor Narro from the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles. I'm also a member of the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. I stand here on behalf of my organization in support of this project. As you know, 70% of the Figueroa Corridor is immigrant Latinos, and this project will have a tremendous impact on them. Most of them are working in low-wage jobs, and this project, what we'll do, it will create 5,000 permanent jobs, at least half of which will go to these community members. For the different projects I've worked on, this is a model that I've worked on that really respects our workers' rights to organize and obligates the contractor to be responsible and respect the rights of the workers. This is the most clear relationship between benefits and immigrants that I have ever seen. I think everybody should support this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Juanita Tate, to be followed by Reverend Richard Gillett.
Good morning, members of the city council, and to my council president, member, Jan Perry. Today is really a banner day in Los Angeles, California. I have not seen a package that has been as cooperatively... I have not seen a package that has been as cooperatively crafted as this particular benefits package is to the community. When you think of affordable housing far beyond the call of duty of what the Staples partners had to do, and I do call them partners because they have worked with us as partners, when you're dealing in families, sometimes the biggest fight is inside, and the best of it comes to the outside. Today, we're glad to stand with Staples to talk about producing 5,500 jobs. I have not seen a project in this city in the last 20 years that would produce that type of jobs, and when we look at the affordable housing and the replacement of the substandard housing that's being replaced in that area, it is just simply phenomenal. When we look at the fact that, as I travel through many cities, downtown Los Angeles has to be one of the deadliest cities in the United States. There's nothing happening down here. It's time for things to happen. I can only say that as the Staples partners, I would negotiate with them any day. They have proven themselves to be real partners in the community, and we sincerely hope that for the Ninth Council District, which has helped, our funds have helped to build downtown for many, many years, it's time for a good package to come to the Ninth Council District. And I'd like to say to each of the council members that have some concerns about the package, the perfect is the enemy of the good. Sometimes you want things so perfect that you never get good done. Thank you very much, and I hope you support this package.
Thank you. Reverend to be followed by José Savala.
Good morning. My name is Richard Gillett. I'm an Episcopal priest, and I'm also the program chair for Clergy and Laity United for Economic Justice called CLU. CLU is an interfaith organization of hundreds of religious leaders and congregations that for the last six years in Los Angeles have supported campaigns for living wages, for worker justice, and similar concerns in the Los Angeles area. CLU's chairman is Reverend James M. Lawson. Last March, CLU published what we call a Declaration of Conscience subtitled "To Fulfill the Dream: An End to Poverty for Workers." It addressed the problem of huge numbers of working poor who continue in their plight amidst the sharply increased prosperity of the city. And I think many of you know that in the last decade, the numbers of working poor in this city increased, and at the same time, Los Angeles added 2,100 new millionaires. The declaration proposed several policy measures, which were the council to endorse this project, which we certainly encourage it to do, would be a major step towards the ending of poverty for low-wage workers. And you've heard several people come before you to talk about its impact on the community and the unprecedented nature of this decision. I think that what this says and why it's attracting so much attention is that it is not just an economic decision. It is a moral decision, a decision that says that public policy can actually have a moral component instead of just calculating the economic benefit. And so that's why we here of CLU and their several clergy in the audience are here today in strong support of this project that promises the beginning of an arrangement of economic decision-making that would be an end to poverty for workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. José Savala to be followed by Gabriel Rubio.
Señor, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Gilberto Ramón. Voy a hablar al nombre del señor José Savala.
Good morning, everybody here. My name is Gilberto Rubio. I'm gonna talk instead of José Savala.
Yo vivo en el 916 de la calle Georgia.
I live at 916 South Georgia Street.
Y mis vecinos y yo estamos muy contentos.
And my neighborhoods and myself are very happy.
Por el proyecto del Staples Center.
Because of the Staples Center project.
Para la creación de parques de recreo y áreas verdes.
Because of the inclusion in the creation of parks and green areas.
Porque en la actualidad, los niños juegan en áreas que no son acondicionadas para ello.
Because in the present time, our children play in areas that are not safe enough for them.
Y esperemos que este proyecto sea cumplido. Muchas gracias.
And we hope that this piece and the entire project are done for our community. Thank you much.
Next is, come forward, Roland Palencia and Geraldine Mendoza.
What you said before, next is Gabriel Rubio. Gabriel Rubio couldn't come here, so I'm here for him. I'm resident of the area. My name is José Ruiz. I live at 944 Francisco Street, and I'm pretty satisfied with the parking lot project for the residents of the Staples Center area, which is going to be financed by the Staples Center for five years as part of the agreement. This is gonna prevent us from getting more parking tickets, so I strongly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Palencia to be followed by Geraldine Mendoza.
Morning, Roland Palencia, Executive Director at Clinica Monsenhor Romero, right in the Pico Union District. I'm here to support this project. Clinica Romero is also a member of the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. This project is being built right at the epicenter of the healthcare crisis. We provide about 35,000 medical and dental visits to the uninsured. It's estimated that about 3,500 of these jobs will actually have, will be living wage or will have benefits. That, in my calculations, will be the equivalent, including the 3,500 members who will have the benefits plus their families, will be the equivalent of about 20,000 medical and dental visits plus all the healthcare benefits. That is almost half of the patient base that we at the clinic see. So, needless to say, another benefit that this will have is to make a dent in the uninsured crisis, given that funds are shrinking and the uninsured population is increasing. I think that this is not only the smart thing to do, but also the humane thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Geraldine Mendoza to be followed by Deidra Floyd.
Good morning. My name is Geraldine López Mendoza. I'm an attorney at Environmental Defense in the Environmental Justice Project Office. Our organization is also a member of the Figueroa Corridor Coalition for Economic Justice. We became involved because we were specifically concerned about the health and human impacts of the construction and operations of an expanded Staples Center project. Specifically, we were worried about air quality, traffic, pedestrian safety, and other construction-related and operations impacts. Our support here for the project today is based on three specific things. Firstly, as mentioned by one of the prior speakers, this area is one of the most park-poor areas in the city, and we believe that the $1 million that the developer has agreed to spend toward new parks will definitely increase the livability and health and safety for residents who live in the area. Secondly, the coalition provided significant and comprehensive comments to the draft environmental impact report that addressed everything from energy to solid waste management. A number of our requests and mitigation proposals were included in the final EIR, and we were very encouraged by that. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, the developer has agreed, as part of the community benefits project that's before you today, to continue to meet with a community advisory committee at least quarterly on an ongoing basis on things such as a solid waste management plan, the traffic plan, the construction plan, the incorporation of green building principles into the expansion, and we are very much encouraged by this commitment on behalf of the developer. We hope and really hope that this will be not only an economically vital project for the city, but also one that will improve the environment in this neighborhood and for the residents who live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Deidra Floyd to be followed by Hector Ramírez.
Thank you. Honorable members of the city council, my name is Deidra Floyd. I'm the business agent of Local 857 IATSC, and I represent Treasures and Ticket Sellers, box office employees. I stand here today on behalf of my union and recommend that we are in favor of this entertainment complex and ask for your support. We believe the project represents a cooperative effort between the community and the entertainment industry. We're very excited about the jobs and the opportunities that will be created for the working people of Los Angeles, and once again, ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hector Ramírez to be followed by Candido Maris.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Hector Luis Ramírez, and I am the Regional Vice President of Para los Niños. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, we'd like to offer our support to the Staples Centers for the Entertainment District. Para los Niños has been in the local community for the past 20 years, offering services to 1,400 children a day and over 3,500 families a year. Our services range from childcare and family services to community and economic development. Over the last three years, we have enjoyed a wonderful relationship with the Staples Center, who has joined our efforts in our mission of raising children out of poverty and into a brighter future. They have been generous donors in providing our families with free access to venues that are offered at the Staples Center, as well as hosting opportunities for our children and families to meet sports celebrities. But more importantly, they've actually offered the Staples Center as the host site for our annual fundraising event for the last three years, which has allowed us to receive close to $1.3 million in private donations for the local communities. So, on that note, we'd like to thank Staples Center for our wonderful relationship, and we're looking to greater things in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candido Maris to be followed by Gordon Merly.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Back on July 3rd, I was before this council, and I said this council had everything to make this city even greater. You had ability, talent, and experience. I said the only thing you were lacking was vision, so I'm asking you to be visionaries and make the greatest city and the greatest country even greater. This is a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon Merly to be followed by Carlos Vaqueroano.
Yes, Gordon Merly, President of San Fernando Valley Federation. We're here to make a few general comments. One is that we support where Mrs. Chick and the mayor are, that there be no public subsidy of this. But we've also noted that you're building this where the convention center is, and this city is so short of hotel rooms that you need to force more hotel rooms if you're going to make this work, because those are the people who would end up using what you're proposing to build. You don't have a transportation system that will service the airport. The Green Line is not something that services those hotels either. So, you need to get a plan that looks further than where you are at this moment, because our greatest concern of anybody who reads environmental impact reports is when you use overriding considerations. This tells the public that you really are not solving all the problems. You're going to sweep them under the rug because you're going to get tax revenues from what you're building. This city and the residents around that area deserve much better than an overriding consideration on this, and we would ask that you sincerely get rid of overriding considerations and meet all of the mitigations that would be required to make that part of the city a workable part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carlos Vaqueroano to be followed by Gilberto Ramón.
Good morning, Mr. President, member of the council. My name is Carlos Vaqueroano, and I'm the Executive Director of SALF, the Salvadoran American Leadership and Educational Fund, and I'm here to join other community organizations to support the Staples Centers project. We believe that Staples Centers will benefit, the new project will benefit not only the Pico Union neighborhood and downtown residents, but also the city as a large. I have had a very good relationship with Staples Centers since the beginning, and I believe that Staples Center is a good corporate citizen. They have been supporting a lot of community projects since the beginning, and I hope that they will continue supporting those projects. Staples Center, new project, is the future of the city, and I hope that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gilberto Ramón. Mr. Ramón here. Maybe he has left. That then concludes the public hearing on this item. Council members wishing to speak, the chair recognizes first the chair of the committee, Mr. Ed Reyes. Mr. Holden?
I think it's appropriate that we get a staff report before we commence so we know what we're talking to.
Okay, let's, we'll hear from the chair of the committee first, and maybe that's part of his comments.
And it should include what is the current agreement, like the bond measure that we floated, how much we're responsible, you know, the whole deal.
We will be getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reyes.
Council President, colleagues, it's my pleasure to stand before you. As you've been hearing in the testimony, this is one of those experiences where the community folks, the unions, the private sector, the city government has come together in such a way where we now have a project that has the kind of impact that essentially will impact three square miles, three radius miles around the site. We'll be generating jobs. We're providing the kinds of benefits that we speak to when we're dealing with these kinds of issues. Today, we have the General Plan Amendment, Environment Impact Report for approval, and we have ordinances, a development agreement, and amendments to disposition of development agreement, as well as other communications, and the details will be provided by the staff. One last point I want to make as far as our input into this process is that I would like to see us include in the periodic review in development agreement. I asked about this at Plumb Committee. I was told it was done. We double-checked, and all I want to add is on the last line of periodic review, that status of each actions of the developer, and that's a key word, of the developer, be required by the community plan, community benefits program annually. So, the report be done annually by the developer, so the three words are "of" the developer.
Hold on a second. Let's get your mic working. And also, Mr. Reyes, if you'll allow me, to invite Councilmember Perry, Councilmember of the district, to say a few words before the staff presentation.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm very pleased to stand here before you today as well. I was a staff person here for the previous council member in the first iteration of this project, and I'm very excited and looking forward to the expansion because we have learned much from the first time around. This expansion includes housing, jobs, a commitment, a solid commitment to community-based organizations, affordable housing developers, and social service providers in a way that was not realized the first time. So, I support this with a great deal of confidence, with one request for you to consider, and I'll just put that on the record now that we can vote on it later. I would like the entitlements, and I hope that we can move forward today on the entitlements with a unanimous vote. With one exception, I'd like to break out the Third Amendment to the DDA and continue that for one day so that we can give some further review on a couple of technical issues.
Okay. Now, let's, thank you, Ms. Perry. Let's move forward with the staff presentation on this.
Jerry Miller with the Chief Legislative Analyst. Before you today again is the specific plan, the development agreement, and the environmental impact report for the L.A. Sports and Entertainment District Master Plan. What is not before you today is any public subsidy or any finalized hotel transaction. The original Staples deal did require that the property to the north and to the east of Staples Arena be used only for surface parking until a master plan was submitted to the city and approved. They have submitted the master plan. They've gone through the entitlement process and the environmental clearance process, and that is before you. With regard to the hotel, we continue to work with them and negotiate to try to bring a hotel transaction to a close. We're in the process of establishing a nonprofit corporation in an effort to be able to finance the hotel on a tax-exempt basis. That is going to have a material impact on the cost of financing the hotel, and until we know that, it's not possible to negotiate a final hotel transaction because the various parties don't know what they're committing to. What we are doing is setting aside the property that the hotel will be built on for 20 years so that they cannot develop the property for anything other than surface parking until the hotel deal is finalized. And it's the same with the convention center expansion parcel. That piece of property also will have to be set aside for 20 years and only used for surface parking until such time as the city is ready to finance an expansion of the convention center up to 250,000 square feet. We do believe it's appropriate at this time to move forward with the rest of the development. We believe that it provides an economic incentive for a hotel development. We believe that it provides an economic incentive for a hotel developer and operator to come in and to commit, make the kind of commitments that will be required to finalize a hotel deal. And City Planning Department is here to talk about the specifics of the specific plan and the development agreement.
Thank you. My name's Jim Holmes with the City Planning Department. Before you are a number of land use entitlements that would create the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment District. They include an amendment to the zoning code, which would create a new zone, the L.A. SED Zone, the zone change ordinance for the property within the specific plan area to that zone, a development agreement, and the ordinance authorizing the execution of the development agreement, and a specific plan, which really regulates land use within the district. Included in this specific plan is an arrangement of land uses for approximately 3,750,000 square feet of development, a provision, equivalency table that allows for changes in the project as it's developed over time, within the constraints established by the environmental analysis, provisions for granting alcohol use approvals, which would provide for 21 onsite and three offsite establishments to sell alcoholic beverages. Included in that are conditions that were negotiated between the community and the developer, a traffic program and parking standards that the developers should satisfy as the project moves forward, and transfer floor area ratio, which allows for various heights within the district. Some parcels may go as high as a 13 to 1 floor area ratio within the entire plan area. The standard 6 to 1 floor area ratio would be maintained. And finally, there's a provision relaxing the number of our sign code provisions, signs being a key part of the design intent of this project. If you have any questions.
Anybody wishing to add anything? Anybody from the City Attorney's Office wishing to add anything?
...established by the environmental analysis, provisions for granting alcohol use approvals, which would provide for 21 onsite and three offsite establishments to sell alcoholic beverages. Included in that are conditions that were negotiated between the community and the developer, a traffic program and parking standards that the developers should satisfy as the project moves forward, and transfer floor area ratio, which allows for various heights within the district. Some parcels may go as high as a 13 to 1 floor area ratio within the entire plan area. The standard 6 to 1 floor area ratio would be maintained. And finally, there's a provision relaxing the number of our sign code provisions, signs being a key part of the design intent of this project. If you have any questions.
Anybody wishing to add anything? Anybody from the City Attorney's Office wishing to add anything?
Good morning. Susan Phan, Assistant City Attorney. Just a minor point on the issues of CECL during the public comment period. Speaker alluded to the need to recirculate the environmental impact report because of various things that were left out and issues about traffic. I consulted with the Department of Transportation, who's reviewed the detailed letter that was submitted, and in their opinion, their conclusions would remain the same with respect to traffic. It's important to remember that there is a separate EIR for this project, separate from any other EIRs the city may have done, and this project has its own mitigation measures. And so our opinion that recirculation is not required was similarly, we don't believe that there is a valid segmentation argument. So I just wanted to let you know that, if you had any concerns about those comments.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I think we first, all of us have to acknowledge the extraordinary coalition that's been before us this morning, the many eloquent speakers from all different walks of life in the community who came together in this project. It's a real testament to all of you that you came together and that you came down here this morning to show how united all aspects and all sectors of the community are behind this project. It's very impressive. It really is the right way to do business when it comes to this sort of project. Now, I rise because I share the concerns, I think, of many of us on the council, that we all want to see progress downtown. We all want to see revitalization downtown, and we especially would like to see over the course of the next generation, something other than pavement directly outside the Staples Center. At the same time, all of us want to protect the public. We want to protect the taxpayers. We want to make sure that if and when a hotel project goes forward, and I understand it's not before us today, but if and when it does go forward, that the public's financial wherewithal is protected. And so that's why I've introduced a motion today, which will require that the consultants who are currently performing the feasibility study with respect to the hotel, that they examine a couple extra items, namely, one, how the city's general fund can be protected under the different scenarios for financing the hotel. Number two, to discuss whether there might be some sort of negative financial or fiscal impact on the city if we go forward with the different scenarios. And finally, something which oftentimes gets lost in this discussion, what, if any, impact there would be on city services from the different proposals for constructing and financing the hotel. I know that's not before us today, but I think it's important that we look ahead to that important debate as we consider this matter today, and I'd urge you all to support that motion when it comes around soon. Thank you very much.
Before I recognize the next speaker, there's somebody in the audience that I want to make a special introduction of because they have to leave here visiting the City of Los Angeles for the day, is Dr. Rodri Morgan, the First Minister of the National Assembly of Wales. Will you please rise? Welcome to the City of Los Angeles, and I hope you're enjoying your stay. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, my comments regarding this whole development really go back to the original vision of downtown and how important it is for us as a city to have a vibrant, rejuvenated, redeveloped downtown community. And I was very pleased by the fact that the development really did not isolate itself and complemented not only the Figueroa Corridor, but the whole downtown community. One of the important components of this vision that was a part of the original agreement is that a major hotel be developed on the site. And one of the concerns that I raised in committee was that the current vote and the current agreements that we have here today do not go far enough to reassure us that our hotel is going to be built, that we're going to have that piece of the vision a part of it, because today we will be basically voting for all the entitlements for the grand master plan. So I really believe that when we entered into this partnership with Staples or the Los Angeles Land, Los Angeles Arena, we entered into a partnership based on a relationship that really brought to the downtown area a major hotel, which I think is so important to the health and well-being of all downtown, and specifically the Convention Center, which we know will be more competitive if we can get more hotel beds in the downtown area. Since having the meeting in committee, I have spoken with Mr. LeWicki about why and how we can best position ourselves in this development project to have our hotel. He presented some facts that were not available at the time, that I would like for him to share with the council here right now, so that if anyone had my concern, they can feel reassured that we are moving in the direction to guarantee or do our best effort to get us a hotel, because most, if not, I would say, most of the jobs that all of the community and the unions have been really pushing for are going to be coming out of the hotel. Marilena Durazo is here today because she represents the Hotel Employees and Restaurant Employees Union, so I want to make sure that we complete our promise, and I believe Tim is in the audience somewhere. Oh, there he is. So, Mr. LeWicki, can you share with us the facts and the why we're going to be successful in this venture and get that hotel online soon?
Thanks, Councilman Pacheco, and thank you to the council for your vision and partnership on this particular issue over the last two years. When this was brought up to us today, I did pull Councilman Pacheco aside and indicate from our standpoint, the hotel is a priority, has been a priority from day one. There are additional issues that have to be addressed with the hotel, in particular the funding and the financing of this, and that work, we hope, will take place in the next few months, and we will be back before the council with a vision on how to take that Convention Center hotel and make it a reality. As to our motive and our resolution towards that, one, that land sits there for 20 years until we ultimately develop a hotel. Number two, we are now moving forward with these community programs, these outreach programs, these commitments to the neighborhood and to the union. So regardless of the hotel, we are locked into these commitments long-term with the community that we've made. Number three, we are about to privately spend somewhere between another $200 and $300 million on the amenities and the properties that ultimately will complement the Convention Center hotel and convince those that are operating it and owning it to come be our partner because of the additional commitment we've made to build the restaurants, the nightlife and the retail in and around that particular district. So we will have $200 to $300 million committed before the hotel ever comes up and begins to open and operate, in addition to the $500 million commitment we have with Staples Center and the land around Staples Center. So for $800 million, I can assure you, we are very focused on the hotel and turning that hotel into a reality.
No, I'm just here to respond to questions.
Okay. Chair recognizes-
I've been anticipating one.
Good anticipation. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmembers, members of the public, those watching on television, we also, we often have a, I said this this morning in a joint committee meeting, we often have a tale of two cities in the city, and I think that we see today finally one city, and it's a rare delicious moment to see so many folks that often don't come together, standing here together, speaking together, and unified on this. It is not flawless, no agreement of this complexity could be, and I think that Councilmember Perry's idea is an excellent one, to make sure that we maybe tighten the window, as Mr. Pacheco was mentioning, or gain some greater leverage to make sure that this hotel is done. I also applaud and support Councilmember Weiss's motion or amendment as well, to make sure that we look at how subsidies are done. It's very easy to smash subsidies, to kind of have a knee-jerk, any subsidy is a bad thing. What's the more important and more nuanced view, I think, is that we have to make sure we have good subsidies, not subsidies to quote my colleagues that go into the pockets of gazillionaires, I agree with that, but ones that actually do get some sort of public benefit, ones that do pay off for our economic and social health in this city. I think also this agreement begins to really chip away at the idea that economic prosperity and social justice cannot go hand-in-hand, that we always have to be at each other from one side or the other. We showed today that we can put those together, and I hope that this will be the model, certainly as those fellow members of the Economic Development Employment Committee go forward at looking at development in the city, hand-in-hand with Plum Committee. I hope that we can continue to do that, and I praise the work that's been done. A couple other things, I think we should also name very publicly the benefits for those that are just learning about this for the first time, some of the benefits that are going to be there, the parks, the housing, the living wage jobs. These are of critical importance, that we don't look at developments as just something economic, but part of a more nuanced social tableau that we have and a tapestry that has to bring all of these pieces together. And I'd like to add just a cherry on top of the cake today by offering an amendment that deals with housing, and we've talked a lot about Housing Trust Fund. I'd like to direct the CAO and the CLA to assess the feasibility of taking a portion of the tax increment after deducting maintenance costs for police and fire, et cetera, to dedicate some from the entire Entertainment District, which is revenue-neutral to the developers, but that would be dedicated to the Housing Trust Fund, so we could begin to fund that as well. So I'd like to direct that study to be done, as well as part of this, as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, this is a long time in coming because the south portion of the downtown area, which was anticipated to be the south anchor, has lagged far behind what was originally thought of in the downtown redevelopment project, which took place in 1970s. With the advent of the, of the sports arena, that gave a new prospect to the Convention Center, which was basically unable to compete with other convention centers throughout the United States because of the inavailability of adequate, close hotel space. This will cure that problem, and I think will provide a very, very important link in the revitalization of the downtown community. I might add, there's one other thing, and I think that what we're approving today doesn't deal with financing. That battle will be waged at some point in the future, and I know that some of us may not be here at that time, but some of you will, and I'm sure that you'll be looking out for the city's treasury and the taxpayers' interests. However, I might add, the benefits that will come from this project are multiple, and there is a ripple effect, not just from the hotel, but from the impact that it has on businesses, on property values in that community. So it's important that we move forward today. You know, question was asked, how can we guarantee? You can't guarantee anything. We can't guarantee tomorrow with absolute confidence that it's going to be there, because that's the way it is. But what we're doing today is placing the entitlements that will encourage the development of the things we need in that area, and it's extremely important. I just want to add, there's one other thing that I hope that the CRA and the city will be looking at, and that's something that I urged the Downtown Redevelopment Blue Ribbon Committee in the 70s to do, and that's to help develop the downtown residential community. And one of the ways that they can do that, and I suggested this years and years ago before I was on the council, is the changeover from what was the offices that in the upper stories on Broadway, Spring Street, there's not much left of Main Street, but Spring Street is still there. These can be converted into residential uses. The only other thing we need, once this thing happens, is a residential community in downtown Los Angeles. That will really revitalize it. So I want to commend the people that worked on this, and I think it's a very, very good plan. At this stage, it's an entitlement of plan. It's going to be up to you to make sure that it gets built in the future and that it's done, the financing is done in the proper way. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. I want to add to that my usual downtown speech. I think it's important to recognize that the benefits of this project will accrue to the entire city, not just to the immediately surrounding area. I have felt for a very long time and continue to feel that downtown is an asset that, at the moment, is being largely wasted. And the reason we all have a stake in the success, the economic prosperity and success of downtown Los Angeles is that it is a place where there is room to do more than we do today, and where, as you've seen, we have a community that is willing to be involved in it. But if downtown prospers, we get more property tax, we get more business tax, we get more local share of the sales tax, and that's what pays for the municipal services everywhere in the city, not just in the downtown. And for those neighborhoods who have fought development in their own neighborhoods and do so on a regular basis, but still want city services, this is the kind of project, this is an opportunity to step forward and support the project and support the entire program because it is a way of funding the services, not only in the downtown and surrounding areas, but throughout the entire city. And unless we do a better job, quicker, of making downtown more successful and more prosperous, we're always going to be a little behind in getting the services to the people that we want to get there. So I think this is great. I think it's, wish it had been done 20 years ago, but you know, the time comes around when it comes around.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I also rise in support of the process that we were seeing before us this morning. I am absolutely amazed and thrilled at the different coalitions that- I am absolutely amazed and thrilled at the different coalitions that have come together in support of this project. Only been on this council a few short weeks, but really have seen other projects, which of course have not had this kind of support, and in my own district, which I represent, many times, development goes forward without paying attention to the community that surrounds the development, and most often, it's the people surrounding a particular development that are most ignored and most forgotten, and most suffer negative impacts of a development. So I am very pleased that this kind of support exists around this project. I also support the motion that Jack Weiss has brought before us this morning, and I also support my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, in terms of seeing if we can use some of the revenue to beef up our Housing Trust Fund. And while I do love downtown, and I do really believe that the revitalization of downtown Los Angeles is clearly important for the whole city, it's not always about downtown, and I would like to see all of you support me when I begin to do this very kind of development on our waterfront. You know, we have a harbor in the city of Los Angeles, we own the Port of Los Angeles, and I see that as a great opportunity for a similar kind of development. We have a million passengers that come right into San Pedro on an annual basis. If we can get this kind of development down there, where there's things to do, places to eat, places to shop, then we have good public transportation, we can get them all the way back downtown to enjoy this development. So I'd like to see you all teach my community how to come together and support this kind of development on our waterfront. So I support this project wholeheartedly, but I also am concerned that we do do everything we can to make sure this hotel is developed. I'm a little concerned by the public comments I've heard over the last few days that have been recorded in the various newspapers, that seems to be there is no great incentive to build this hotel without public subsidies. So I think that's something we're all going to really have to deal with. There's been overriding comments that this will not be feasible without some kind of public support, so it's something I think we're really going to have to pay attention to in the next few months. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
San Pedro is going to become a separate city, so—and so will the valley, too, at this rate, if you keep doing everything in the city. Hold my time, because I'm going to ask Mr. Deaton to give us some background information on the agreement as it now exists, and how the hotel plays in all of this, in this mix, Mr. President.
Basically, the city entered into an agreement with the Arena Corporation to build an arena at its present location. The arrangement was that they paid for our cost of the North Hall site, which is where the arena is, and some property along Figueroa. My understanding is they pay us roughly half a million dollars a year for the next 20 years, or 18 or so years remaining on that, 17 or 18 years. The—we, the city and the CRA use their powers under CRA law to obtain the properties along the Olympic and Figueroa. There was a $70 million bond issue, not bond issue, but a—we borrowed money against the cost of roughly $5.2 million a year. That money was financed in two fashions. One is a ticket fee or requirement of the arena company for $3.5 million. The remainder was to be paid for by increased parking. If that parking did not show up, and did not be, was not viable, or we didn't get any money for that, then the arena company makes up for the difference. Thus far, almost an entire $5.2 million is being paid for by the Arena Corporation on the $70 million, so thus far, and it appears to be the case in the future, is that the city will not be out any money whatsoever for that arena, which compares favorably to other cities and their arrangements for the development of such a facility. What you have before you now is a change to that agreement. We had anticipated that the first development under this piece, the remaining pieces of property would be a hotel. Our office and the city administrative office have been working with the arena company on trying to develop a mechanism for developing that hotel. We believe that it will involve taxes and financing. We've got instructions from the council to proceed with the creation of a tax-exempt entity that will allow for the financing. We hope to be back in the next few months with a financing package, with a operator of a hotel, and the necessary financial arrangements to do so, and we will bring that to you as soon as we are in a position to do so. What you have now is, as has been stated, as it relates to the hotel and Convention Center expansion, is a dedication of two pieces of property for 20 years, for the sole purpose of either hotel development or the expansion of the Convention Center facility across 11th Street going north. We believe that, although this does not include specifically the development of the hotel, because of the economics of the hotel, development moving ahead on that site is a critical element of it. We believe that the additional customers, et cetera, that the arena people will get as a result of that hotel is substantial incentive for them to work with us on that hotel. And finally, there are other things, other aspects of the existing agreement, replacement parking, et cetera, that are not included as part of this agreement, even though they would have liked it to be, that provide additional incentives for them to stay at the table. Hence, I believe that we should move ahead with this proposal today, and we will be back with you in short order with the necessary financial package to build a hotel where we wanted a hotel for a long time. I seem to recall, in fact, I seem to recall standing with John Forrow when we started the arena project, and that maybe once again, we could see Elgin Baylor play in the city of Los Angeles and not in the city of Inglewood. And since that's now, although Elgin Baylor, I don't know, has played since—in the arena, it does—we have accomplished a part of it, we will get the hotel.
President, members, just to add to that, the replacement parking was to be used for the Convention Center, which you didn't discuss, number one. Number two, the land that was acquired by removing the people from that site, including the school, was to be used for a hotel. It was kind of land banking, and the discussion in the original agreement, even though it's not included in the final agreement, because you were given authorization to negotiate the final agreement, which I don't think I ever saw, but what was included in it was requirement that the developer develop a hotel, and give it a certain amount of time to do that. Failure to build a hotel, then we, right, Mr. Wax, we were to then assume that responsibility with a timeframe. If we had failed to do it, then the land would go to them forever, and that was part—hey, I remember, I got the file in some boxes, but we'll bring it down here and we'll show you, Mr. Deaton. That was part of the initial discussion as it relates to the agreement, iteration 1 through 20, whichever one we finally voted on. We gave up North Hall, which was 100,000 square feet, we had 850,000 square feet for the Convention Center, now we down 750,000 square feet, with the expectation to build someplace else, and now we're discussing how we're going to expand the convention site within this agreement, which should have been something that's granted to the city of L.A. anyway, which was not the case. Mr. President, members, I must say, however, that you got this guy Tim Lawicki over there, Chris Majeski, the great ambassadors with the Convention Center. But I got to tell you that, they do a good job, in fact, they have me going over there once in a while from time to time. But looking at this agreement that's before us, it talks about the zoning administrator, no discontinuous abuse provision to allow replacement establishments to avoid going through the whole process, the zoning administrator can sign off on legal license transfers and so on and so on. I don't think that's a good idea. I think that at least the councilperson, the district, should be in working with, in connection with, the zoning administration, administrator, to say yes or no. I mean, you're going to need some amendments here, don't you? That's right. Well, I'll make the motion, and be seconded by Mr. Kosky, that that be in amendment, because it should be included in there, I think, among other things. It says, sign modification for some of the corporations, identification and the names of buildings, as long as corporate identification in proportion with the rest of the signings. Now, you know that the moment we signed the agreement, the moment we signed that agreement, they got $100 million, the developer got $100 million for the Staples Center sign going out. Now, it would have been nice for us to know that, because the $12.5 million that Mr. Wax gave from CRA, signed off on, to the Convention Center, to the developers for the purpose of developing the site, we could have gotten that paid off, okay? Now, my time is up, but I'm going to push my button again, because those are questions I think should be answered. We—and the question—
Okay, let me—if I might, first off—
If there be any more money made from signage, we want to use that money to offset the debt that we owe, that CRA owes to the developer, which is $12.5 million.
Yeah, forgetting the—
You're aware of that, aren't you?
I'm quite aware of the $12 million. As it relates to the—as far as the money that we borrowed, the $70 million that bought the property and the payment for the North Hall site, we're all being—we—that amount of money is all reimbursed right now. We—that is not money that's coming out of the city's pocket. Okay. As it related to the hotel, we never had a such—never had an agreement at the end. There were many iterations, as you recall, Mr. Holden, arguably the longest two years of my life, as we went through various iterations on this deal, but at the end of the day, the development that was going to be first was the hotel. We have backed off on that in order to move ahead the way we're talking about right now with dedication of the property. There was not a certain period of time in which they had to develop a hotel. That was supposed to be the first development. And as it relates to the planning areas, we'll talk about your motion with the Planning Department right now.
There's a requirement—
Mr.—
Bob Sutton for the Planning Department, there's a requirement in the development agreement for a community advisory group that's appointed by the council office, that would work with the developer to determine the input as far as the alcohol permits. So that is foreseen and is part of our action. In the development agreement, there is a community advisory group that would work with the councilperson, appointed by the councilperson, to work with the developer on the alcohol beverage concerns. So that's built into the development agreement, in terms of your concerns, Councilman.
Mr. Ridley-Tomás.
Mr. President, members of the council, I simply rise to support the initiative that has been displayed by a host of participants, both on the public sector side as well as the private sector, both for-profit and non-profit, and it should be noted that this in and of itself is significant, to arrive at a point where this kind of project in size and scope has garnered the level of consensus that has been evidenced by the comments made by those of the public, members of the council, as well as those who have been working on some of the details. It is equally important, I think, to take the point by way of leadership expressed by Councilwoman Perry, to pause for a moment by way of moving the time-sensitive matter forward, as has been moved by Mr. Reyes, as the matter has been heard, and the committee he chaired this morning, and the balance to be finalized pursuant to the motion that has been made by Mrs. Perry. I simply rise to support that with full consciousness that we are well on our way to having something extraordinary happen for the city of Los Angeles and beyond as a regional destination point that will be unrivaled anywhere in the nation. I wish additionally to make the point that, on the question of subsidies, I would rise to caution any a priori decisions about the matter of subsidy. It was in 1999 that a motion was introduced for the express purpose of getting our arms around subsidy, not just with respect to the downtown business district, but throughout the redevelopment projects in the entirety of the city. That work is still being done, I suspect that it will be heard in economic development and employment, as well as housing and community development, because the range of resources and opportunities at our disposal for playing a role on the part of the public sector to move projects forward, to incent those projects to the point of completion, seems to me to be fundamentally important. Prudent investment in such projects can only portend an upside, I believe, for the city, for its residents, and for all that we are attempting to do in the name of revitalization. And so I think we have to evaluate with care, with caution, with the kind of capacity that we have based on other projects and our deals that we have seen go forward, not the least of which is the Staples Center itself. And to the extent that that is the case, I would hope that we would take time to review the subsidies package, and in the generic sense that we need to apply to a range of projects, see if in fact that makes sense, before drawing any steadfast conclusions. With that, I simply want to say that it seems to me, once again, that we can do something extraordinary here, and it can be done so by following the prudent leadership that is being displayed, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, once again, the thing that troubles me, that all we're doing is land banking. Let's do it in 20 years. You're not creating jobs tomorrow. You're not providing affordable housing tomorrow. You're not doing anything with an eye vote on this motion today, was before us, for the next 20 years. Did you know that? And that being the case, is saying that the city is motionless in this regard to this particular project. Nothing is being done, but talk, talk, talk. If they really want to do something, and I'm—hopefully that they are willing to do that, Mr. Deaton, I mean, you've been negotiating this, and I got to tell you, I'm a—I'm a little upset a little bit, because whereas you got a nice plan, where there's some protection and safeguards, in 20 years, a lot of folks won't even be alive around here, and you know, 15 more people can change it.
You and I will be here to discuss it, Mr. Holden.
I understand that, we're long-lived. We're talking about the other ones, you know, we've got problems, genetically, that is. So what I'm saying, Mr. Deaton, is that let's get something today. If you can't get it in 20 years, which you won't, 20 years from now, Tim Lawicki, as good as he is, and good health, and then, but you know, he was just saying, pass it on to the next guy. What about 10 years? Why 20 years is such a magic for you?
The reason for the 20 years, and I would make it 100 if I could, is the longer they can't use it for any other purpose, the more incentive they have to build the hotel. I would—the—so that—the reason for that long, and the only reason is 20 years, is that's the length of the agreement.
Which you come back with a plan, and you're going to talk about subsidy, you are going to talk—you're going to talk about that.
I will talk about the financing of the hotel when we come back—
The financing of the hotel, you're going to be asking for public funds, and they—you know, we gave public funds to build the Staples Center.
No.
We did. You gave 12.5 million, I know that, plus others, you know that, Mr. Deaton.
We paid $70 million.
What about the 12.5 million that we incurred, that we have to pay them off? What about that, Mr. Deaton?
That's part of the redevelopment agency.
Well, still, the city of Los Angeles, now, this is not the first time you subsidized a hotel. In the project in Hollywood, the 13th District, we froze the bed tax at $75 per night. You could do—it—you're doing a big renovation and new construction on the hotel. Those hotels will—room will go for $300, $400 a night, but your bed tax will only be for $75. The differential will go to subsidize the construction of the hotel. Is that right, Mr. Deaton?
That's right.
That's right. So this is not the first time you've done anything like that. I mean, who are you kidding around here? I mean, I take that Jinko stuff, it keeps your memory going.
I think you're taking too much.
Kinko. So the point I'm trying to make is this—
Mr. Holden.
My time is up again? No, it wasn't expired at that point. I had two seconds left. The fact of the matter is that, Mr. Deaton, you can build a hotel using the same formula that you— that you use in Hollywood, at least making a contribution to the development of a hotel, and I think that you ought to take a look at that.
Right, we will. Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of clarification, I wanted to make an actual motion on my previous request for a, the continuance only on the Third Amendment to the DDA, and that everything else will go forward today, and that continuance is just for one day, and I hope that we have a unanimous vote on the entitlements.
Colleagues, that is a motion. Mr. Reyes seconds. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of ending the talk, talk, talk that Councilmember Holden spoke about, I move the previous question with amendment, amendment, and amendment.
Okay, and you are the final speaker. Mr. Clerk, please guide us through a series of votes we are about to take.
The first item before you is the motion just made by Ms. Perry, seconded by Mr. Ridley Thomas, to continue the third implementation agreement amending the DDA and one day until tomorrow. That will also include the amending motion, which has been circulated and identified as 6A.
Everybody clear on that? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Holden?
I'm recording.
Recorded as a yes. Mr. Clerk, next item.
There is an amendment by Mr. Garcetti to direct the CLA and CAO to assess the feasibility study regarding tax increment to dedicate to the Housing Trust Fund a certain percentage of funds.
All members clear on that?
Second.
Ms. Hahn seconds that amending motion. Mr. Ridley Thomas, did you have a question?
The maker.
Mr. Garcetti.
Is it on the, the balance of the matters that are being continued, does it speak to the agreement, or?
Mr. Garcetti.
What, what it simply does is it looks at taking the entire entertainment district, and after paying the maintenance fees for the tax increment, looking at dedicating that to the Housing Trust Fund, or a portion of that to the Housing Trust Fund, the feasibility of doing that.
Feasibility of it?
Yes, just feasibility, feasibility.
The motion is to study and report back.
Got it.
Okay. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I didn't hear the clerk mention my motion, my amendment, friendly amendment, that I wanted annual report on each benefit that has been included in the, in the development agreement.
That may be coming next. Do you want to restate that for everybody? We got it, Mr. Clerk?
To request an annual report on each amendment, and then...
On the community benefits, Section 4.
Just annual report back on the community benefits plan in its entirety to committee?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's take the Garcetti motion first, and then we'll vote on Mr. Reyes's motion that's just been clarified. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Now you have before you the Mr. Reyes's motion.
Any questions on that? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Move it.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved.
Now you have the item before you, which is the Planning and Land Use Management Committee Report Recommendation.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
It's all approved. Mr. Clerk?
The final vote is to adopt the report as amended.
Any last questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 6 has been approved. Mr. Clerk, let's take item number 4 next.
Item number 4 is an item notice for public hearing.
Item number 4 is notice for public hearing. Do not have charge for members of the public to speak on this item, which shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Any members wishing to speak on item number 4? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 4 is approved. Let's end that forthwith. Next item, please.
Mr. President, at this time, you do have 13 members. Do you wish to reconsider the ordinances that you had adopted earlier, items 2, 14, 16 through 17?
Okay, let's do that.
The matters are now before you.
Colleagues, we've reconsidered the ordinances on today's agenda for purposes of obtaining 12 votes or more. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the ordinances, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those ordinances are approved. Mr. Clerk, let's send item number 6 forthwith as well.
Mr. President, item number 7, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Colleagues, item number 7 is now before us, called special by Ms. Hahn.
Yes, I called the special just because I was, just had a couple of questions about the 90 million dollars in bonds that we would be issuing, and how it would be repaid back. I'm assuming it's the sanitation equipment charge that we all get in our DWP bill, but then I was concerned by the, the line that said the general fund may have to absorb some of the increase in debt service. Like to know, you know, what equipment it is we're buying, if previous bonds that were issued to buy other equipment that gets paid back by the service equipment charge on our bills has been repaid. And the other thing, this might be a, a CLA question, is according to the new charter, every time that we vote on issuance of bonds, we are to have a debt impact statement on the agenda, which to me is different than the fiscal impact statement, and it came as a result of the city being unaware cumulatively of how much debt we have out there, what debt service we're paying, and that was to be provided to every council member before we voted on issuance, any new issuance of bonds. So I was kinda wondering, couple of those questions.
Mario Vasquez with the City Administrative Officer. Mr. President and members of the council, let me try to take some of those questions, starting with the debt limit statement. As indicated in the CAO report, the debt service on the proposed bond issuance will be repaid from revenues from the sanitation equipment charge. As such, there is no impact to the city's general fund debt ratios, and we have not included such a statement.
The general fund may, the general fund may have to absorb some of the increase in debt service in 2002, 2003.
Yes, Councilwoman, that statement was written incorrectly. Revenues from the sanitation equipment charge does pay for debt service. However, any revenues remaining after payment of debt service are used to pay associated costs, such as reimbursement to the General Services Department for maintenance of the sanitation collection vehicles. If this bond issuance is approved today, debt service will increase by 2.3 million dollars in fiscal year 02, 03.
And do we know what our total debt service is?
Yes, for this bond issuance and for other existing bond issuance, and if you give me a few seconds here.
Mr. President.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you. Mrs., Ms. Hahn is quite correct with respect to identifying this, and Mr. Vasquez has taken the time to correct that which should have been corrected. It should say related costs rather than debt service itself. Mr. President, members of the council, this is noted in the fiscal impact statement as a part of the CAO's report. It is not directly germane to the action itself, but I do believe that it should be corrected for the record. The substance of the matter relates to making sure that the sanitation department remains cutting-edge and is able to continue being one of the most highly-rated departments in the city. The surveys that have been done time and time again report out throughout the 15 districts that the trash is picked up with reliability, with dependability, with regularity, and over the years, this department has won award after award in a variety of ways, environmental as well as with the advances in technology, making the job more doable by the employees without the health-related risks that are associated with, as you may have recalled, chasing these trucks, as was the case to keep up years and years ago, just to dispose of our refuse. And so what we are really looking at here is automated, automated recycling containers, new sanitation trucks, as well as the other capital improvement to the yards that have to be done. I do want to acknowledge again that Ms. Hahn was correct in trying to figure out what this actually meant, and the CAO has appropriately confessed its sins of error with respect to this madam, matter, and I suspect with that we can proceed. Suffice it to say that open confession is good for the soul.
duly noted.
Can I just also, thank you, I, I agree, but can I also get clarification on the difference between a fiscal impact statement and a debt impact statement that I, I was under the impression should appear every time we vote to issue new bonds?
Need that for purposes of voting on this item, or can we direct staff to answer your question later?
Councilwoman, debt impact statements are done for any bond issuance that affect the general fund, but not for specific revenue bond issuance, such as the one before you.
Okay. Ms. Sikowski.
I was gonna clarify that, and I think it might be useful for, particularly for the newer councilmembers, to get the debt chart, the debt statement chart that is generally done, which shows incrementally by a bar chart, what amount of general fund requirement is to pay off debts, both those that have been existing on earlier bonds that were financed, as well as those we might consider currently, including MICA, including the kinds of things we normally do, which are the ones that are an obligation of the general fund. The, the special revenue funds are those where there is a special revenue dedicated to it that doesn't affect the general fund, but needs to be analyzed to make sure it's not affecting the general fund, and that the special revenue is covering, that, that the financing is only based on the amount of special revenue that will be generated by the special revenue fund. But there is a chart available, and I think that that chart should be included normally as we do any kind of bond financing, even right now, those that are special funds, in fact, showing how much the special fund is available to cover this. I would just like to add to what, what Mr. Ridley Thomas indicated in this one, this year in particular, members of the council, we are probably in maybe about 10 years of the rollout of what had been our special trash containers and the recycling containers, and we need to replace them because for, for some of those communities that have had them, had them for a number of years, they have become a little bit worn, and, and in fact, we heard in Budget and Finance earlier last year that they literally were down to their last few barrels and getting lots of requests that they couldn't make, so we actually had to front in some general fund money just to help replace those bins that people were using, are using well, are recycling, but we need to make sure that we're providing enough of that equipment out there for our public who is using it well. So, but I think that the issue on the, on the bond financing should be at least made available, particularly as everyone has that first chart, and then can be looking at it as we look at future bond issues that come forward.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn to close.
Thank you. I hate to be a stickler on this, but it is not up to, according to the city charter, Section 325, it is not really up to us to go and try to find this chart that lays out the debt the city is incurring and what the debt service is. According to the city charter, every time this body votes on incurring any indebtedness, doesn't really speak to whether it's general fund indebtedness or, or revenue bonds, we are to be provided with a debt impact statement and how we can all see how much debt the city is incurring and how it's being paid off. So, I really, I think that's, and it's new, I mean, this is a new charter, this has never been done before. I would just, I, I think, I would like to see that followed.
We'll do that from now on with all of our debt issuances. We'll provide you the chart as well as a debt impact statement.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 15, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I called the special, and I don't know if there's staff here, but I wanted to make sure that while the Coastal Commission is dealing with some issues that would be impacted by this, that we'd make sure that the, the public hearing, the scheduling of the public hearing was conscious of that and would try to do that after the Coastal Commission had completed its work. Councilmember Glanter told me that she believes that they will, so I don't need any further discussion of this.
Mr. Garcetti, did you wish staff to answer your question? Okay. Ms. Glanter moves approval. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 15 is approved.
Fourth with, please.
Fourth with on item 15. Next item, please.
Item number 23, called special by Councilmember Miss Sikowski.
Ms. Sikowski has left council chambers. Let the roll reflect Ms. Sikowski's absence. Any members wishing to speak on item 23? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 23 is approved. Fourth with on item 23. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item not on the agenda is Special 1, motion by Mr. Garcetti. The city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Mr. City Attorney on the findings.
Mr. President, members, this is a motion from Councilman Garcetti regarding a lease for the Foundation for Early Hood Childhood Education for a Head Start Program located in the city property at 5637 La Mirada Avenue. Our office opined on this matter that in order for this lease to be effective, there had to be a designated lease period, and I understand that that would be for 10 years. In order for the council to consider Mr. Garcetti's motion, there needs to be a determination made under the provisions of the Government Code and Rule 23 of the Rules of the City Council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's council agenda.
Anybody wish to speak on the findings? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Colleagues, Special 1 is now before us. Mr. Garcetti, did you wish to speak on Special 1? Mr. City Attorney?
Well, the council, what would be doing would be amending its action of August 15th, and that action, it did not designate how long the lease period should be, and Mr. Garcetti indicates that lease should be for 10 years in order for this lease to be accepted by HUD.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Special 1, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Special 1 is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number, Special 2, not on the agenda, is also a motion by Hahn Padilla, and findings need to be made... Padilla, and findings need to be made by the city attorney.
Mr. President, members, this is a motion from Ms. Han regarding the proposed redistricting of the State Senate and Congressional districts located for the Port of Los Angeles. In order for the council to consider Ms. Han's motion, there needs to be a finding that under the provisions of the Government Code and Rules of the City Council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's council agenda.
Any questions on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Special Two is now before us. Chair recognizes Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise before you with this urgent resolution to see if you will agree with me that as the governing body of the City of Los Angeles, we can formally object to the initial drawings of the maps, particularly for the congressional district. Every 10 years, somebody gets, can I say screwed? Can I say that? Somebody gets the shaft, some community of interest gets the shaft in redistricting, and this time, the community, two communities of interest got the shaft. One is the City of Los Angeles. They've taken our port of Los Angeles, and they've put it in an Orange County congressional district currently represented by Congressman Dana Rohrbacher. And I don't have to tell you, the consequences of that, I think, are at best problematic, but at worst, it could clearly hurt the economic engine which is owned by the City of Los Angeles. What's more importantly for me, of course, is the communities of Wilmington and San Pedro, who have for so long been trying to forge a respectable relationship with this Port of Los Angeles to accommodate the community in their expansion, in their development. This clearly separates the communities of San Pedro and Wilmington from their own port in terms of their congressional representation. The Senate representation is as well problematic, but I think it's the congressional one that really poses problems for us. I don't think we want our Port of Los Angeles to be represented by an Orange County congressman. So I hope you will agree with me, and we can send as a body a joint objection to this. The reason I brought it up today is the maps just came out this weekend. They are holding hearings tomorrow. I plan to go testify, so it's kind of, they're deciding it this week whether or not they're going to look to redraw this. I've also asked our city attorney to begin investigating in case, I want him to actually bring legal measures against the map drawers for this.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, it seems to me that the item before us is a rather important one, but not simply as it relates to the particulars that Ms. Han has raised. I wonder if we oughtn't be alerted to other such issues that may be problematic, this being only one of them, and if, in fact, those who are on point to pay attention to these items for us have done so. And so I take this opportunity to suggest that Ms. Han has raised an issue that may be relevant in other parts of the city as well, and if so, I would like to request of the CLA to quickly peruse those maps, find themselves back here for our consideration because I would like for us not to be asleep at the switch, and I'm not sure that we would not have been aware not for this special that has come before. So I would join the maker of the motion to dispose of this as a special, but I would also think that we ought to have a report back from the chief legislative analyst to give us some consideration as to whether we are adversely impacted in other parts of the city and or county as well, and I would so move.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand the motivation and the reason why there's this urgency that my colleague has identified and why she's brought this before us. I have some hesitancy, and perhaps she can address my concerns. You know, redistricting is a line drawing process, and a lot of lines are getting drawn all over the city, all over the county, all over the region, and all the lines, you know, at some level relate to one another. And you may have very well put your finger on the most egregious example here, the worst-case scenario, the one community of interest that really should have, would have, could have been held together, although I do know from reading the newspapers that there are other considerations that might also be countervailing. You know, there certainly has been, when you look at the demographic trends throughout the state of California, I mean, there are just certain ethnic inevitabilities which need to be taken into consideration when you look at the overall map of California as a whole. And so I guess, I think it's very appropriate for you to go and testify tomorrow and really lay it on the line before the appropriate legislative bodies. But I have some hesitancy when I look at your motion about all the wherethes. It's pretty harsh language in some respects, and I guess I'm uncomfortable with our, as a body, by this vote today, since along the lines of what Mr. Ridley Thomas has pointed to, to single out this one particular area as being the egregious area, when there might be other areas that might or might not warrant our attention. And I know why it's come up this way, I know why, I know what the exigency is. I doubt there is realistically the chance to send this to a committee for a full and fair discussion, but that's why I'm cautious and why I might not be able to support your motion.
I appreciate that, and like I said, you understand why I need to, I mean, they're really, they're holding public hearings starting tomorrow on these things, and I would like the full weight of the city council, and particularly, and I agree, and I think as Councilman Ridley Thomas brought up, you know, we haven't really looked at all of the City of Los Angeles to see where certain communities of interest, I have other places, actually, that I'm not even mentioning, where I have one community that will now be represented by three congressmembers. The community of Wilmington will be represented by three different congressmembers. That's amazing. I think that's egregious. But I think the Port of Los Angeles is what's critical to us as a city. I think if we had our L.A. International Airport represented by a congressman in Orange County, I think you could begin to see the problems that that's going to create. It wasn't very long ago that there was, I think this very congressmember brought forth legislation in Congress to prohibit certain types of tenants from being given places in the Port of Los Angeles. China Shipping Company was one of those. And as you know, we all just voted to approve that contract not too long ago. There are so many environmental, economic, and really quality of life issues surrounding the Port of Los Angeles, I mean, this is our Port of Los Angeles, that to have this represented by a member of Congress from Orange County, that's, I think, for us as a body, it's critical for us to stand up and say, that is not acceptable to us. You're taking a port that's not only in the city, but it's in the county of Los Angeles, and you're letting someone who represents Orange County determine a lot of federal issues that surround the port. So that's, I think, why it's important to me for the port. Like I said, there's a lot of other places in my district that I didn't really mention that I'm upset about, and I plan to talk about as well, but I think for us as Los Angeles, this is critical for our livelihood that comes through the Port of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Burnson?
One of the things that we should be looking at, and I hope the CLA has been in looking at some of these things, is the fact that how it does impact us, and I think obvious, this is an extreme case. Obviously, there are other cases, but we can deal with those also at the same time that we approve Ms. Han's motion. Number one, you have to realize the game that's played is played in Sacramento by the state legislature, and they are the ones that create the congressional guidelines or districts. We should be calling upon our delegation from Los Angeles to protect the city from things like this, and we can do so individually as well, if each of you will call your representative and talk to them about protecting the city on things like this, or things that you have that you feel are not appropriate. But I must tell you that the main consideration for them is not how they draw the lines as communities, it's how they protect certain congressional districts. For example, the person who's done the main consulting on this is Michael Berman, and obviously, that district that his brother occupies is one that has to be shifted in order to protect his seat in the future. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be, because I think that Howard has been an outstanding congressman, so, but that's the way the game is played. So what you might do is contact your Assemblyman, I think you want to talk to the Speaker of the Assembly, and also to Mr. Burton, who is the pro tem of the Senate, and I think that we could possibly make some adjustments. It seems to me that the one that's been proposed here is an extremely flagrant one and should be corrected, and while we're doing that, we can look at all the others. So I would urge an aye vote on this.
Mr. Holden?
I agree with Mr. Burnson for the same reasons, but I want to point out the fact that, Mr. Weiss, that each legislative body takes jurisdiction over drawing its boundaries, and no one should meddle, no other body, especially another body should meddle. They resent that. The congressional delegation draws its boundaries, the Senate draws their boundaries, the Assembly draws their boundaries, and would you believe? No, no, no. I know what happens there now, and the council draws its boundaries, and it will not listen to the Assembly or the Senate, because they're not going to tell us what to do. However, I think it's reasonable with this motion to submit the request to Michael Berman, who's drawing the boundaries for the congressional delegation, period. And they will make the recommendation, Mr. Burnson, they will make the recommendation to the Assembly and the Senate, and they vote on it. They will, if they try to tell the congressional delegation what to do, then the congressional delegation will move to tax per diem, which, that's the leverage which they don't want in Sacramento, they get that free, tax-free. Do you understand, Mr. Burnson? All right, very good then. But that's the way it works. That's the way it works, Mr. President, members. So, but for this reason, because there is an excessive abuse in its appearance, that I think that Mr. Michael Berman and this president pro tem of the Senate and Speaker of the Assembly can accommodate us in this request, and because we all have leverage also. We cannot tax per diem, but we do have leverage, and I would say this is the time to exercise that leverage, Mr. Weiss. It's an abuse, and the reason why I think we should do it otherwise is because that congressperson will represent the interests of Orange County primarily. We had to have something of interest for the port, that's for the City of Los Angeles, we need that port to be included in a congressional district that's within the county and certainly within the City of Los Angeles, and I think that the point's well made, and we would be in order for it to make the, you speak on my time, Mr. Burnson.
Ms. Sikowski?
I rise to support the motion as well. When I first seen this, that this was getting involved in a redistricting matter in another jurisdiction, I had a concern, similar to what Mr. Weiss had raised, but as it was spelled out in this motion, the port is critical to Los Angeles, it's critical economically, it's an engine, it is actually, we are the governors of it by way of the State Thailand's Trust, so in fact, there is a relationship already to the state. But as we would go to need support for that person in Congress or our state legislature to deal with port issues, that person should also be representing other people predominantly in the city, if not the county of Los Angeles, and that this is being created in a way that that other, that congressional person would be representing folks primarily in Orange County, would have very, very little sense in terms of their interest in listening to the City of Los Angeles. It also strikes me that there's relatively little populace there, if in fact it's being separated out from San Pedro and Wilmington and some of the other areas around the city, then it's a very, it's a very narrow population base, and it's one that's not going to make such a big difference on the congressional issues. So it seems to me that the substantive issue of the port should be connected to a substantive congressional person who represents other areas through the South Bay, in the City of Los Angeles, in the county of Los Angeles, not in a separate county. I think that the analogy to the LAX being represented by somebody not representing major portions of L.A. city and or county region is appropriate, so I think this makes sense. I have no problem looking at it supplementally in terms of the other districts to see if there's anything else as egregious, but I would then subscribe to Mr. Weiss's concern that we not get involved in those other areas where we may not feel that it was the best division, but that's just our feeling versus their feeling. This one is egregious, this one stands alone, and I think this one is appropriate for the council to take this action, so that when Ms. Han goes to Sacramento tomorrow, that can come with the force and voice of the city saying the same thing, and not looking at all the rest.
Thank you. Mr. Wax?
Well, I don't think it's really analogous to the airport, specifically because the counties have competing interests for airports. Right now, where the people at LAX are down at Orange County fighting for an airport in Orange County, the Orange County doesn't have a competing harbor to my recollection, so I do think that they're different. I still, however, so I don't accept that as a valid issue, but I still agree with Ms. Han's position for other reasons. The thing I would suggest, however, Janice, is that whenever you make a change, it changes everything else, and you may have to be prepared to say that if that were to happen, how would you, you know, the logical thing for me would be, okay, you want this, now how would you do it? So you may give some thought to that, because any, now, the fact that it's not a, well, I won't say substantial, but the fact that it, because it's important, but the fact that the numbers may not be that huge population-wise, may make it easier to come up with a recommendation. But I think you better be prepared when you go to follow it through in terms of some kind of a suggestion as to where some changes or some possibilities of changes might be made. But I don't know that the analogous to the airport issue will hold up. I think that there are other issues you could equally raise that would be effective in doing that. I'm glad you brought it before us. The difficulty, of course, is that most of us haven't seen it from other things, and it really would be important for the CLA to really do some very quick analysis on the rest of it, but you're to be given credit for having taken the initiative on the part that affects you the most.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want my colleague to understand that I really do understand the points that she's making today. My concern is, let me see if I can express it this way, the motion as presently drafted reflects the city council's opposition to the proposed map. Well, that's all well and good, but do we have an alternative? Because when you start, when you, it's not in a vacuum. If you redraw just one portion of one line in one way, well, that has a domino effect on all sorts of other considerations that might be adverse to the City of Los Angeles in other respects, that might be adverse to other values that are important to many of us in other respects. And so I guess when I look at your motion, I understand what motivates it. I would be personally much more comfortable if, for example, instead of expressing our opposition to it, if it simply had the second clause of urging the governor and the legislature to examine the proposed maps, given the sense of the city council that the Port of Los Angeles should remain intact in one district. It's when you start talking about our opposition that I'm not certain whether we can in good conscience express that, because it's going to have effects on other areas and other districts, because it just does, because it's a line-drawing exercise. And so I would ask you if you would be amenable to removing the opposition clause and expanding the urging clause in some way, shape, or form, because I think that's ultimately what you are going to be urging people to do tomorrow, is you're going to be coming forward with a request that they consider alternatives, and so I would just make And so I would just make that request of Ms. Hahn.
Mr. Pacheco.
I didn't read the language that, in that manner, Mr. President and colleagues. I thought it was a balance of stating clearly what we did not want to see happen, which was the Port of Los Angeles being isolated from the adjacent communities, but at the same time directing or urging the governor and the state legislature to examine any new proposed district maps and its impact on the surrounding communities also. And maybe that's where I'm disconnecting with, with my colleague. So do I need to add language to cover that? Because everyone's correct that it will have a ripple effect because that's just the nature of moving lines. But I think we have to be very clear to what we want. And what we do want is that we not isolate the Port of Los Angeles. And the only way to communicate that is by stating clearly that we oppose the current. So I understand that part, but I think there's a way to meet the other concerns that it's going to have this ripple effect if we can add some language here that deals with that the governor and the legislature should be sensitive when redrawing the new maps to the ripple effect or something along those lines. But I, I, I think there's a win-win here that we don't have to sacrifice being clear about our opposition to the isolation of the Port of Los Angeles. So I would simply ask someone who's better at this to help me out here or help Ms. Hahn here.
Ms. Hahn.
Well, I don't know if I can help you out with that. Like, we can work on that. But I, I feel very strongly that we do need to oppose this. The initial drawing of this map, which takes our Port of Los Angeles and puts it into an Orange County congressional district, I think we ought to be very strong in saying that. If we just kind of say, gee, we'd hope you'd kind of relook at this and next time you draw it, consider this community of interest. I mean, that's clearly was their mandate in the beginning was to consider communities of interest when they draw these lines. And I know there's going to be rippling. Uh, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. I think they can put it in the Jane Harmon Congressional District without really having to add a lot of population anywhere else because there's not that, uh, as Cindy Msakowski said, there's not that much population where they've taken that. But I really would like us to say we are opposed to our Port of Los Angeles being put in an Orange County congressional district. Yes.
Don't we oppose this aspect of it? I mean, very specifically oppose it, but oppose that part of it dealing with the harbor as opposed to the whole plan. Maybe that will, maybe that will.
I mean, that's what this motion says. And, and you know, if, if, Jack, if you can't support this, I understand. But I, I really want to go tomorrow with, with strong opposition and let them know that we feel very strong about our Port of Los Angeles and who's representing it at the federal level.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
But if you, if you want to throw some other language in there.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Mr. President, there has been an amended motion put forth by Mr. Ridley Thomas. Is that accepted by the mover of the resolution? It was to direct the CLA to carefully review the preliminary redistricting maps and report back regarding potential impact to the city.
Understood that to be a friendly amendment.
Okay, so it would be the resolution as amended.
But this resolution, if it goes after, it will play.
Correct, the resolution remain intact.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Good luck tomorrow, Ms. Hahn.
Fourth, fourth with, please.
Fourth with.
Because the mayor has to sign it.
You able to get ahold of him? Next item, please.
Mr. President, item special three, not on the agenda, also requires a finding to be made.
Mr. President, members, this is a motion from Councilman Ridley Thomas. It seeks the city's support of Assembly Bill 489, which would prohibit certain predatory lending practices and impose additional requirements on high-cost loans to better protect borrowers from unethical lenders. In order for the council to consider Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion, there needs to be a finding made that under the provisions of the government code and the rules of the City Council, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's City Council agenda.
Anybody wishing to speak on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special three is now before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, you will recall just about a month or so ago that I brought in a motion on predatory lending that was unanimously adopted. The matter before us now is that of support for AB 40, 489 with respect to the state now seeing it as its responsibility to deal with this matter because of the practices that have been made evidence in terms of high-cost lending and how it negatively affects a wide variety of people, particularly senior citizens. And so it is with that matter in mind, Mr. President, members of the council, that I ask for your unanimous support and support for this Assembly bill. It is in conformance with the thrust of the resolution that was unanimously adopted by the body. It is not as strong as some of the things that we had hoped, but it does move us in the right direction and toward that end. I think it's wholly appropriate that we embrace it and cause the Assembly to know that we are in support of all that we can do to arrest this practice of predatory lending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special three is approved. Fourth with on that item.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, item special four, not on the agenda, is also brought forth by Council Member Ridley Thomas. A finding needs to be made.
Mr. President, members, this is a, a motion from Councilman Ridley Thomas seeking to correct a council action of August 3rd in which the city was to receive funds through the state of California for its Department of Aging. And the amount on August 3rd of this year understated the amount that we were supposed to receive from the state in the amount of $260,696. Today's action would correct that amount and make that application correct in its form. In order for the council to consider this motion, there needs to be a finding made that there is a need to take immediate action on the matter and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's agenda.
Anybody wishing to speak on the findings?
Move the findings.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special four is now before us. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, the matter is technical in nature. I think it would be everyone's view, all members, that is, that approximately $11.1 million entitled, um, three slash seven older American Act funds ought to be utilized by the city of Los Angeles with prudence and dispatch. This motion effectively corrects that which was incorrect. It is technical in nature and it facilitates the services to our respective districts and the seniors who populate those districts, particularly in the area of congregant meals and home-delivered meals and a range of other things. And the Department of Aging is anxious to see this go forward and I would so move.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved.
Fourth with, please, Mr. President.
Fourth with on that as well. Next item, please.
Mr. President, special number five, not on the agenda, is brought forth by Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a time-sensitive issue because of the state legislative program. We, I would like for our City Council to support SB 19, which was introduced by Marta Escutia. The reason that this is so important is because it would limit the availability of junk and fast food and carbonated beverages to school-aged children at city facilities that provide those things. And this would be in support of the Senate bill so that we too, as a city, can look at the, the types of food items that we are serving to our children and to make sure that we are doing what is most nutritious and, and best over the long term for their health. So I ask for an eye vote.
Mr. City Attorney on the findings?
Mr. President, members, in order for the council to consider Ms. Perry's motion, there needs to be a finding made that under the rules of the City Council and provisions of the government code, that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter and that the need for action came to the attention of the council subsequent to the posting of today's agenda.
I have requests to speak by Mr. Weiss and Mr. Garcetti on the findings or on the subject matter? Okay, let's open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special five is now before us. Thank you, Ms. Perry. The chair recognizes next Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think it's a, it's a good motion that Ms. Perry has put forward. I know staff have had some discussions about whether Ms. Perry would be amenable to separating out the questions because the, the second clause in her motion, which would have the city basically adopt SB 19 itself, I think is a worthy goal, but I think we should probably have that sent to committee so we can study, you know, what exactly are we talking about in the city? Is it wrecking parks or where else? And how can we do it in a, in appropriate manner? It's a friendly suggestion. So I'd move to separate out the two questions and with that, I'd urge support for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that, that's a, a good goal to separate that out and I support Mr. Weiss's amendment. And I would just say that for those council members, they should check out the snack area. We need to practice what we preach because all that's left there is apples and the baked lays and everybody's eating the junk food here. So if you want the kids to change, we got to change too.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Anybody else wishing to speak? I believe we just had a letter submitted on this item from Rudy Savornich in opposition? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Did you wish to take the support of SB 19 first? And then for the second one, take DAPA policy, which sets standards?
Boy, it seems to be two motions in one resolution. Colleagues, should we vote on these items separately or jointly?
Not sure I understand. You wanted to take them together.
My motion was to separate them and to have a vote on the first measure, SB 19 here, and then send the second clause to committee.
Okay, let's vote on them separately then. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the motion to support SB 19. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Now we have the remaining part of the motion to develop a city policy. Mr. Weiss, which committee did you wish to send that to?
March Health. If there's another committee which oversees departments which have such programs, it should be sent there as well. I'm not, I'm not certain that there is. That's one reason for having it referred to committee. Uh, I think education would be a good, a good idea as well.
Ms. Perry, as the author of the resolution, did you have a preference either way? Ms. Perry, as the author of the resolution, we have a request by Mr. Weiss to send the second portion to committee. And the author concurs. In that case, the vote's not necessarily, we'll send the second part of her resolution to committee for consideration, to Art's Health. Think that dispenses with that item. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number three is held on the desk at the request of Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? Request to continue item number three to this Friday. And without objection, we shall do so.
September 7th.
September 7th. Next item, please.
President, now is time for public comment.
Public comment period is the opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not listed on today's agenda. The council calls forward first Mr. Michael St. Hill to be followed by Dee Leaning.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I hope you give me respect as I give you respect. And I have some serious problems here with the city of Charlotte, excuse me, the city of LA. And it's written down here, you're not going to give me enough time to, to tell you all of those things, police corruption, uh, corruption within SRO Corporation, where you support the SRO Corporation of LA and they do not support you. They do not support the city of LA. And the reason why you have so many vagrants in the downtown area in the toilets and the, and all of that negative activity going on downtown is because of SRO and all the corruption that goes on in there. And you need to seriously do something about it. And to address Mrs. Perry, I was talking with Mrs., with one of the supervisors at SRO and some supervisor at the Central Station. And they informed me that they coordinate activities with Mrs. Perry and those activities are totally against me. If you're looking and waiting for me to break the law, 49 years, and I didn't before, I'm not going to do it now. And if you like me, uh, don't hold your breath. But if you don't like me, please do hold your breath. I am a law Biden citizen all the way. And I wish Mrs. Perry would understand that. I think several months ago to Brotherhood, I belonged to ask me about people to support in LA. And I got a pamphlet from Mrs. Perry and I suggested Mrs. Perry, not knowing her then and I don't know her now. Please give me your respect. Because when you speak with SRO and LA police on a person who is obeying the law, on obeying by the law, and they create problems for me, then I have to go ahead and clear those problems that you create for me. However, I'm not going to take any more time. Here's, I wish you all read this and I will submit them to the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dee Leaning to be followed by Francisco Magdaleno.
Uh, Dee Leaning, Sunland, Tahanga. I'm coining a new word today, which is un-killing. Yes, I am requesting that something un-killing be done for residents of Sunland, Tahanga. The un-killing thing would be to ban L.A. USD Cardinal, Atlantic, excuse me, Atlantic Express and any other bus companies from training their drivers on the streets of Sunland, Tahanga. Newscasters tell of diesel fumes killing the children who ride the school buses, to which I am adding, these same diesel fumes are hastening the demise of this senior citizen. Keep the cheering down, please. And other Sunland, Tahanga residents. A suggestion would be to build simulated tracks away from neighborhoods and homes and having the drivers train there. In conclusion, anywho, as many streets as there are in Los Angeles, they should not have to train drivers in Sunland, Tahanga, but only once a millennium. Yes, a millennium. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Francisco Magdaleno.
Good evening, members of the City Council and the mayor. I'm here to discuss, implement rate control in our county, the rest of the counties, to initiate a rate control issue. I'm, I'm coming from part of the city of Amani and they don't have rate control in the city. And we want to implement to establish rate control issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Motion for first posting and referral.
Motion are posted and referred.
Councilmember's request from excuse, from council attendance, Councilmember Weiss request to be excused on Wednesday, September 5th to leave at 11:15, a motion is required.
Mr. Weiss requests to leave tomorrow. Going to have to answer, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Msakowski moves.
Councilmember Glaner requests to be excused on Friday, September 7th for city business, a motion is required.
Mr. Burnson moves.
The desk is clear. The desk is clear. Adjourning motions?
Yeah, I am. Mr. President?
Colleagues, first like to recognize, Mr. Zine is not here today. The reason he's been excused from today's meeting is to attend the funeral of the deputy sheriff who was killed last week, Jake Kuragian. Services are taking place in Glendale, so I want to request that we adjourn in the deputy sheriff's honor and recognize Mr. Zine for representing the city and the city council in those ceremonies. Mr. Burnson.
Yes. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Esther Ann Williams Bellinott, longtime constituent, lived in the 12th district from 1955 through 1996. She passed away on August 18 at her daughter's home in Kennewick, Washington. She's survived by four children, 14 grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. One of her sons is Russ Bellinott, who is in charge of supervising our audio technicians in the council. And I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Rita Fitzpatrick, who passed away on September 1, 2001. She was employed in my office from 1979 through 1993, when she retired. Rita was a dear friend, and somebody, were it not for Rita, I probably wouldn't be standing here today. She worked very hard on my first campaign, and she was a very, very dear person. And unfortunately, she developed Alzheimer's disease and had to retire from the city, but she passed away in September, and she will be greatly missed.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, we all heard in the entertainment community mourns the passing of Aleah and her entourage and a plane crash. Here's a young woman, and those associated with her had a promising career in the entertainment field, and certainly at the age of 22, it was a tremendous loss for not only her family, but for all those who were entertained by her and the industry. So, Mr. President, members, we're going to miss them. A number of them who were in the plane crash lives here in Los Angeles, and we'll provide the clerk with the names and information.
Thank you.
All members?
All members. Mr. Wax.
Yes, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Jack Elliott, who passed while the council was in recess. He's really one of the great composers. For those of us growing up, and we did in television, almost all the major shows had his music, as well as many of the great films. He also was the musical director for the Summer Olympics in '84, and a great composer. But more importantly than that, he really devoted himself to creating music and to involving young people in careers in music. He started the New American Symphony, which later became the American Jazz Philharmonic, and commissioned a lot of really innovative new works in the field of jazz, and most particularly been working with the Henry Mancini Institute, which brings young musicians from the world to Los Angeles for an extraordinary experience. He died on the day that the Mancini Institute benefit was being held, that he had been planning. He leaves his wife Bobby and his three children, and he'll be sorely missed, but he'll have made a tremendous mark on the cultural vitality of this community and a lot of young musicians' lives.
Mr. Weiss.
President, I'd like to second that motion. Mr. Elliott was the father of a kindergarten classmate of mine, actually, and I spent a lot of time at their house when I was a young child. And what Mr. Wax said is absolutely right. I mean, every great TV show from the '70s, every great theme, the one I best remember was the theme from Barney Miller, which is priceless stuff he was responsible for, and really a unique individual.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
It will be noted, Mr. President, members of the council, that it was Jack Elliott who reached far and wide and collaborated with us during the early stages of the Martin of the King celebrations in the city of Los Angeles. And we joined together to sponsor one of the concerts that was to be held at the Shrine Auditorium. Jack's commitment to making music universally applied is well celebrated, and I have the fondest of memories in that effort where we worked together. And not only was he obviously an extraordinary musician and conductor, but he had a lot of heart, a lot of drive, and let it be well-known for and why that Jack Elliott was tough as well.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.